Summary of development permits. Proposed motion that the municipal planning commission accept the summary of development permits for information only. Shall we second? All in favor? Okay, and the development permits. T zero 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 four six dash two two D M V Dyno Licks. Proposed motion that municipal planning commission approves development permit application T triple zero four six dash two two D. M V submitted by Nate Sarita for mobile vendor Dyno Licks located at Munchy Park Rotary Splash Park and residential routes between locations subject to conditions as presented. Can we get a motion before we discuss? Shall we? Second. Good. I'll get you, I keep forgetting you over there. So this is a mobile vendor application, so mobile vendor permits come to. M P C for approval and so this is. Believe Nate Sarada right there, the applicant, so we will let him explain what he's proposing to do this summer.
I'm gonna be start starting up an ice cream bike. To sell ice cream around Drumheller. Just packaged ice cream like popsicles, fudgicles, creamsicles and all that stuff.
Are you gonna have one of those bells on your?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a bell.
So is it a, is it like a little bicycle with a little fridge thing on the front of it, like a cooler on the front, like an old Dicky D's style or you wouldn't know what Dicky D is?
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little cooler on the front of it.
Okay. Is it? Okay. And will you, are you the only person operating a bicycle or will you have employees working for you?
I haven't really figured that out yet.
Oh, okay. Guess it depends on how it is, I guess. Do you have lights and stuff on your bicycle for the evening or reflectors?
No, it's just gonna be during the day.
Sorry, no, no, talking from the crowd. One more outburst from the crowd and we'll ask you to leave. You have your, you'll have your turn next. Okay. How old are you?
I'm twelve.
Twelve?
Yep.
So is this, are your parents making you do this as a form of child labor?
No.
Forcing, so this is an entrepreneurial spirit you're actually having here now. Very good, good. Any other questions from anyone? I think this is pretty similar, like we've already approved one around town, a motorized one with someone who's older than twelve. But I think overall this is in line with what we've done with some other ones in the past, so we recommend approval of it.
Motion?
So the motions, motion and second, motion and second, motion, you all have to just vote on it now, you've already made the motion.
Oh, sorry?
You already made the motion, because that's how we got to discussing it, so now it's just a vote on it whether or not everyone agrees.
So, all in favor?
Great, pass carried, so you, you have your approval to go out and do it. Should we have made a condition about providing free samples to members?
I didn't wanna get the bribes in on the official.
This is being recorded, so that is not what we would do here at all, so. Shrinkage, perfect, so.
A one?
As many as it takes, right? Sugar is good, perfect, okay, thank you very much, thank you. T triple zero four four dash two two D M V Uncle Ice Cream. Proposed motion municipal planning commission approves of development permit T triple zero four four dash two two D M V. Submitted by Ramesh Somasundaram for mobile vendor. Uncle Ice Cream located at Rotary Splash Park, Newcastle Beach Suspension Bridge and Residential Roots subject to conditions as presented. Can someone make a motion so we can have some discussion? Kirk seconded. So this is pretty much the motorized version that we just heard, so from, so this person is looking to do their. Mobile vending as well, like driving around with their truck, you can see the picture of it. In the application there, so. They had previously been at the hoodoos and then their partners in ice cream. Set up a C can there last year and so they're, they're now looking to do something that is truly mobile, so.
Hopefully they're more than twelve.
Yeah, 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 and they've been doing this, they've been doing ice cream sales and stuff since at least twenty fifteen in the valley, so fifteen sixteen. Can I get a? So you've done a motion, so any, any other question, I guess any questions or comments from anyone? No?
If not, all in favor?
Okay. Okay, carry.
And T triple zero six seven dash two one D Development Permit Extension Request.
So this is a, uh, application that was received approximately a year ago for, from an applicant. First name is Michael who is looking to build a C, a home out of C cans. On the corner of Fifth Street East and Sixth Avenue. So there's a vacant lot in the north, sorry, in the southeast corner of the four way stop over by the consortium property, just for everyone's. Yeah, that's right, so this person's been looking to do it, they've. Been putting their, I guess ducks in a row for lack of a better word, getting their financing and stuff, but they're just, they're not at that point where they're ready to. They've, they've actually had it surveyed, it's been cleared, but they have just not moved fast enough to actually get this done within the period, so we're. They have requested an extension where they're expecting to be constructing this year, so.
Can I get a motion? Okay, and discussion?
I have a question.
Use your microphone.
I have a question, um, do we have in a dollar amount to fix to this? Eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's an interesting one and just not unlike the next application that comes forward, so, so C containers are a bit of a funny thing because people look at them because of the. Ones that are used and abused that come into the community and then, and don't look like, don't, aren't well prepared. This one's brand new, the couple of them at the hoodoos that are installed are, were brand new containers, so you know, painted to look very much blend into the surroundings. When done well, these things are no different than a stick built home, you know, they're, they're really an R T M, ready to move prop, uh, home. That gets, that doesn't require much assembly on site, but I think there's a little bit of a misnomer about, you know, C cans and sort of their usage and stuff, so. They can still be made to look very, very good, so. And a lot of communities are using them because they are very prolific and. Steel walls, steel roof, right, very well constructed, especially compared to say a stick built home, so. It's just, it's, it's something out of our ordinary norm, so.
Does it fit within? The guidelines for a regular built home, like is it the same width? Cause it's not necessarily narrower, that would.
Uh, there are no guidelines for, for how wide a home needs to be, and you know, I think co- common guy, common. Sense guidelines would say that you'd wanna make sure that whatever you're constructing inside, you know, things like a bed actually fits in a room. Kitchen cabinets and bathrooms and stuff like that, but yeah, and in a case like this, they're really not much difference. Than an Atco trailer that you have on a campsite, so.
But just the municipality I came from, we had. Standards where you couldn't put a single wide on a, on a lot.
Okay.
Put a double wide because it was wide enough or, or, you know, a manufactured home, but. Yeah, we had people trying to, well, if I had a porch, it's gonna be wide enough.
The land use bylaw doesn't have minimums, it basically has setbacks from the property line and anything that's meeting the setback is allowed, so. But good, yeah, good question.
Okay.
Any other questions or, or comments, Tony?
Yeah, just on the width as well, this must be one of those oversized C cans, but confused because the, the roof plan shows sixteen. Foot nine wide and then the last page there on, on the, the actual specs shows twenty five foot wide. How wide is the thing?
The, the lot itself is only about twenty five feet. So, what, oh, I see, and actually on the.
On the basement plan there, the, the last page. Shows a width of twenty five eleven. And then I'm looking at the roof plan, shows a width of sixteen, nine and a half. And then my other question was just in, on insulation there. On the inside walls or the outside walls? Cause it does look for a pretty tight floor plan there.
Sorry, that last, so you're looking at a different application, the very last pages are a different application.
Yeah, I'm sorry here. Way too far.
I think there's actually a couple of pages missing, Antonio, off of the, off the, so this is a. This, this is Canalta's application, which is the next one.
Okay, yeah, that's the one I was looking at.
The one bef, it's the one before, so it's on page.
We're sixteen foot nine and a half wide then?
That's right.
On a lot that's.
Twenty five, I believe it is.
Twenty five. Okay, just out of curiosity, is the insulation on the inside or the outside when you do these things?
There's insulation, it's sandwiched, so it's in the walls.
Well, it's already in the container, okay.
Yeah, they use an S M type, like a rigid foam insulation, so.
Great.
Call for a vote then?
So this is remember to extend, so we've already, M P C already approved it once, so this is just approving the extension, so.
Yeah, yeah. All in favor of approving the extension? Okay, and. House or Regional Municipal Services? Do they have something?
No, no applications today.
Okay. And. T zero zero one four zero dash two one D and T zero zero one four one dash two one D Permit for Discussion Only.
So thi- this is the items that are at the very end of the.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the last two pages, correct? Antonio, this is, this is what's here? Yes, so this is the. Valley Distillery downtown, and so you've previously approved, we brought to M P C. Some discussions around, or and, and M P C's approved the two buildings, the one on center, sorry, on Third Avenue and the one on Second Street. So there's been a request by the applicants to amend the. Development permit for the actual distillery that's on Second Street, so this is for. Visual sake, this is the brick building that faces Second Street or the highway and then there's two vacant, there, there's two parcels, but it's a parking lot that's adjacent to it, to the north of it. Between that and a house, which is just south of the church. And so the, I think Nick is gonna talk a little bit about some of the changes required, I think as a result of some of the. Engineering needs regarding, regarding the distillery that.
Recording in progress.
Requesting. They, they have to put the mechanical on the outside of the building, so if we look on page forty six with the blue on there, that's, I think everyone's got that. You can see that there's a little bit of a, there's electrical mechanical addition on the north side of the existing building because it has to be built on the outside. And then there are four sort of lined pieces there, those are C containers, so again, four C cans. That are proposed to be built or installed near the, or at the property line, all tied together. For something that Nick will explain and then they will be all fenced off by, by it's proposed to be a ten foot high fence. With a sliding gate at the front and back, so Nick, if you want to add any more to that?
There you go. So, so the plan with the C containers is for storage, so it'll be to store some of the grains and malts that are used. For the distilling process as well as there will be just other storage needs required for the facility. The, the thought of the, the ten foot high fence was to, to hide the C containers. We know that the town doesn't particularly like the C containers, so the thought was it would be a, a wood fence. Horizontal slots on it and then the, the gates at either end would just be a chain link fence gate for that. Thus, it, it would hide the C containers from, from sight, right, so. And then, did you, did you want me to speak on the mechanical room or?
Um, sure, I think, sure, you.
Yeah, the, the thought was, is originally the, all, like the, the boiler system. And everything else that, that's required for this was all gonna be placed in the basement and, and it's been, it's been. Brought to our attention by the engineers that that's not a safe place for it. And so rather than taking up valuable space on our manufacturing floor upstairs. The thought was to add this, this mechanical room to, to the north of the building, right? So it would be a lean two style, obviously it'll, we'll have the, the plans and everything sent in with the building permit if it gets approved. And. Yeah, I guess there's not much more to add to that.
So is the mechanical addition, so what, what's gonna be placed in there, so is it?
Yeah, so it would be a, a boiler system, an R O system, it'll also have air compressor. As well as. Like a hot water on demand and sub panel for, for the building.
So how will, so I am just trying to think, how will noise be handled from a compressor?
Uh, like from an air compressor, i- it's just the same as you, you would find in a garage, it's not massive, right? So as far as that goes. I feel like it, it won't be, you're kinda trapping it in that yard space, right, ideally, right, so. Um, I, I would hope there wouldn't be a ton of noise from that, so. It, it, it definitely wouldn't be any louder than like the chiller that we have to have sitting out there, right, so.
Okay, I just, I guess what I'm thinking about is the fact that you, you are, you're now putting an air compressor outside that's.
Well, it, it would be in a building.
Enclosed building, I guess, yeah, just from a noise for the neighbor, residential neighbors adjacent to you, right, so.
Yeah, and, and it will be in the building, right, so in the building will be properly insulated, there will be ventilation in that building, so. I guess there is chance of noise coming out, but like I said, I, I can't see this being any, any louder than the, the chiller, right, that will have to sit outside, so.
Okay.
Nick, about how much room is it gonna take for this mechanical outside room?
Yeah, so, so that's where it's, when we submitted this, there's a few things that have actually changed and that would be. That'd be captured on the, the building plan, right, and all the, the drawings that will be sent in. So this one shows two meters by six point four. So the, the thought is, is that we, we may be putting furnaces in there versus a rooftop furnace. And so, so it, it will actually be bigger than this, it'd be more like three meters and potentially the, 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 the length of the building there. To, to the east from where it starts. But like I say, that's not finalized because we're still waiting on the engineers on a few things there, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Kirk has to send it. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one question about the boiler, is it gonna be like a power boiler? Will it have to be like A B S A certified?
It, it's, it's only, it's under fifteen P S I, it'll actually be at thirteen P S I, so my understanding of that, it, it does not have to be correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Call for a vote then?
No, no, we're not doing anything, we haven't brought.
Or just discussion only, that's right.
So the second part to this is that the other, so again, there was two applications, so this was one that was originally discussed. And the second one was the actual tasting room, which is on Third Avenue and that there was gonna be a rooftop patio. So because of, again, some, I'll let Nick explain it better, but they were, they wanna amend that to, to not include a rooftop patio at this time. But also, but instead to put a patio space between their building and the building to the west, which is the golf building. So there's a narrow area in there, I don't know, is it eight feet wide roughly?
Nine, nine feet wide.
Nine feet wide, pretty good guess. So, and Nick, I don't know if you wanna explain that a little bit, just to.
Yeah, yeah, so the reason for the change is just the, the sheer cost of the rooftop patio. It wa, it was gonna add a substantial amount to the, the overall build. So rather than doing that, we figured that this would be a good option, so we have a, a lease, a five year lease agreement with. It's actually Ascend Financial that owns the property next door and yeah, so basically it'll, it'll basically. Right, right now that, that building in between the two is, is basically just a lot of riffraff. That walk between the alley and, and the front street and so this will kinda block it off similar like we've done at Valley Brewing. It'll all be a decking, wood decking that's on the surface. With a fence at either end, it, it will not be blocking their fire escape that they have sitting there as that feeds to Third Ave. So basically it'll start at the gas meter at the back and then run to the, the front and just before the fire escape. So it's about seventy one feet is what that looks like. Yeah, I guess that's.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to comment on that, Nick, I, I like that idea quite a bit better, you're right, it is a kind of a garbage, high garbage area there, so nicely finish it off. From the front to the back alley stretch there, my question was the fire escape, but you did answer that, so.
A- and I've actually spoke with the building inspector and he said as long as, like it shoots to the front, right, so that's what they're looking for there, so. There's no, he, he said, no one's gonna run back towards the buildings when there's a fire, right, they're gonna come to the street, so.
The other advantage is on the shady side, so my beer doesn't get so warm so quick, right, so.
Agreed, yeah, we think it'll have a very cool kind of New York alley kind of vibe to it, right, as far as the, the shade and, yeah.
Great. So any other comments or, or questions from M P C? Or anything else you wanna add, Nick?
No, like, like, I think as far as the C containers go, we, we are. Like, we don't necessarily have to have that high of a fence, right, that, the thought of that, that height of fence was to, like I said, to hide the C containers, right? But the, the plan was, they're all gonna be stacked together like that, so the plan was to, to paint the, anything that could be seen from the exterior, right? Just to, to clean them up. As well as i- if we did that, maybe there's potential that the fence could be lower, lower, right? So the, the thought was to hide the C containers and it kinda creates like a, a, a usable yard space that is secure, right? From, from anyone trying to get in, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. So. I would suggest that we, if, unless you're comfortable with what we just heard of you, unless you could go into camera to discuss it a bit more, because it would come back at the next meeting. So, or we can just adjourn now, so whatever you want, Mr. Chair.
Why don't we go into camera?
Okay.
Can I get a motion to go into camera? Shall we, second, Kirk? Kirk?
Good, thank you. Good, thank you.